With the quorum being present, I will call to order the Thursday, February 9th, 2012 meeting of the Santa Barbara City Planning Commission. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please? Commissioner Thompson?
Here.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Here.
Commissioner Larson?
Absent.
Commissioner Campanella?
Here.
Commissioner Bartlet?
Here.
Vice Chair Jordan?
Here.
Chair Lodge? Here. Preliminary matters include first requests for continuances, withdrawals, postponements, or addition of ex-agenda items. Mr. Cotto?
None of those things and no appeals or announcements either.
Okay, thank you. All right, so then that brings us to comments from members of the public pertaining to items not on this agenda. Is there anyone wishing to speak to the Planning Commission? Not seeing anyone. We will move on to the first new item, which is Item 3A, application of Roy Harthorne, agent for Mike Walker, to Oliver Road. This project consists of proposal for a new 115 linear foot chain link fence.
Chair?
Yes.
Let's see if there's any traction for waiving the staff report and moving right to questions and comments, so I'd make that motion if the rest of the commission is interested.
Any second.
Pardon me? You second? Okay. I'll write any discussion on the motion to waive the staff report. If not... All right, not seeing anyone wishing to speak. On the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The motion passes. I will just briefly say that this is a fairly simple project, a fence replacing what had been an existing fence, but in such a way that can keep individuals from coming onto private property in a rather hazardous situation on the bluff out of Mesa. Mr. Jordan?
We'll move to questions then. Is that okay?
Yes.
Okay. I just have a question for staff. Somewhere in the information, I saw a reference on the final segment of the fence that extends out over the bluff, that there is a restriction on the type of... I'm missing the phrase. I'm blanking on the phrase. On the type of the material it could be used.
Right.
That it needed to be a lighter material perhaps than the rest of the fence? Does that sound right? I'm sure it was on the fold-out set of plans that I didn't bring.
I didn't see that.
A lighter schedule than the rest of the scheduled type of tubing, perhaps?
Chair Jordan, I mean Chair Lodge and Commissioner Jordan, I can defer to the applicant, Roy Harthorne, who's here, and he can answer that question.
Okay.
Mr. Harthorne?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, I think in reference to that question, I would best simply read the second item of the... Actually, yes, the second item of the minutes from the Single Family Design Board Consent Calendar, and it simply states that the last 10 to 15 feet of the fence along the bluff should be reinforced to discourage vandalism.
Okay, I think I probably have it backwards. That was my concern.
Contrary to being rider, it's probably going to be heavier gauge, such that someone can't simply come with some hedge clippers, and you'd probably have to resort to something heavier duty like bolt cutters. So heavier gauge chain link.
Or if somebody was attempting to hang on the end of that and swing around, it would be heavier and it wouldn't damage his fence, right?
Right, exactly.
Okay, perfect. I think I probably read that exactly the wrong way, but that's good to see. Thank you.
And if there are any other questions, I'd be happy to respond.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Yes.
Ms. Schwartz?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Harthorne, a couple of quick questions here for you. There had been a discussion at the Single Family Design Board, black versus green fencing, and they required one of the two. So is it now down to black chain link fencing? Is your client's preference?
That is the preference. It actually is easier to hide because of the shadowing and the dark nature simply reflects less light.
Okay. And then my other question is regarding... This is under design review also, on page six of the staff report. Regarding the reinforcing, discourage vandalism in the last 10 to 15 feet of the fence along the bluff, could you talk to us a little bit about what that reinforcement will look like if it's not referenced elsewhere that maybe I'm overlooking?
Principally, it's the heavier gauge chain link. On a secondary basis, there would likely be some guy wires, some diagonal guy wires between the last two set of posts in order to provide some lateral stability, such that, again, as Commissioner Jordan pointed out, somebody that is dead-set on trying to swing around a fence that's cantilever two feet over the edge of the bluff, that there would be some additional strength that it would provide reinforcement.
Okay, thank you. And then I have a couple of questions for staff here. Ms. Brodessen, in terms of this camping issue that apparently has been going on from time to time in that area, could you share your thoughts with me about how you think this change by the applicant is going to deter or eliminate public camping on the bluff there?
Chair Lodge and Commissioner Schwartz, the fence itself will be along the private property line, so I don't know that it will deter trespassers, or not trespassers because it is the public right-of-way, but actual camping on the bluff because that will still be open. So that is a city right-of-way that would fall under enforcement by the city public works.
So that's just a danger we'll have to... Public danger we'll have to keep an eye on. And then I think my last question here for you is staff's comment on page five. The staff believes the proposed fence will actually reduce impacts on the bluff from erosion. So on the one hand, we say we can't really completely prevent the camping and other trespassing or activity. So how would you view the proposed fencing alleviating it sufficiently or to the best of the applicant's ability?
Madam Chair and Commissioner Schwartz, I think currently, as we witnessed at the site visit, there are people that can't differentiate between where the public right-of-way ends and the private property begins, and people are, I guess, trespassing onto the private property and creating, as described by the applicant, an illicit pathway that is kind of dangerous. So it would actually inhibit them from crossing over to the private property line and prevent more erosion by public passers.
So would you say we're just narrowing the area of activity that's problematic, both for those who are in the area as well as the bluff itself? Is that... Okay, thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Bartlet?
Thank you, Madam Chair. If staff could put up the site plan, it would be really helpful. I have a question. In reading the staff report, it lists the setbacks for the property, you know, 20-foot front, and then interior and rear being six feet, and yet nothing is plotted on the site plan. Am I to assume that the front setback is this zone here, where the garage is set back 20 feet?
Mr. Cotto?
Chair Lodge and Commissioner Bartlet, yes, that's true. You know, but it's a little bit, I don't know, strange, I'm just going to say, because, you know, normally the right-of-way has a street in it, right? And in this case, as you can see that Oliver ends, and although the right-of-way keeps going, there is no street there. So, I mean, technically, the setback would go all the way back along that side, 20 feet. But for the portion in question, like right in front of the house, it certainly would be a 20-foot setback right there, yes.
Okay, well, the reason that I ask is obviously we're proposing a six-foot fence right on the front property line in an overheight hedge that is existing, not to mention all the current site improvements that have occurred in the front yard setback. So I'm just trying to get a handle on why there's no modifications to do this, or just for safety reasons, we're going to ignore it, or...
Well, okay, so this is the reason, and because... Well, okay, here's how we got to where we got to with this. The reason... There is a fence height requirement, right? Three and a half feet within the first 10 feet of the front lot line, and for a distance of 20 feet back if you're adjacent to a driveway. And the purpose of that, well, there's... The main purpose of that, one of the purposes at least, is to sort of prevent streets, private property being walled off by overheight hedges or overheight fences from the right-of-way. Sort of like, you know, I mean, this happens a lot in Montecito with the big hedges, you know. My understanding is when the city put this into place, it was to prevent something like that. So there's an interaction between the public and the private. In this case, like I said, when I first started, it's a little bit on the strange side because even though it's, quote, "a front lot line," there's no street in front of it, right? So...
But it acts like a walk street. People park their car and then they walk, you know, out to the bluff. I mean, it's public right-of-way, and that's why we're putting up the fence, because the public is using that area as public area.
Yeah. Yes, I mean, Commissioner Bartlet, you're right about that. The portion of the... Okay, so, and then the other thing I just want to say, the portion of the fence that is adjacent to the street part of it was, it is three and a half feet. I can't remember. I think it's 20 feet back from the right-of-way. It'll be three and a half feet. You know, we... I don't have a great answer for you, other than that's the way we were thinking.
Okay. It looks like the applicant might have input, though.
Mr. Harthorne?
In the municipal code, a street is defined as a public way constructed for the primary purpose of vehicular travel. So while this is right-of-way, it's not technically a street past the barricade, and that's why we stopped the three-and-a-half-foot section at the barricade and went up to a full height of six feet.
Right, but it's still fence in the front setback, though.
But the setback is... The front setback is adjacent to a street. So you have to take the series of definitions through to their logical conclusion that if it's not a street, then it can't be a front yard setback if there's no street. That's our interpretation.
Okay. I've never seen jogged setback lines once you get past a driveway or end of a street. I've always seen whichever side is at the street, you have that setback the full length of that property.
Well, as a point of information, the city attempted to abandon this section of land back in the '90s, and for a variety of reasons, they abandoned that attempt. However, it is an undeveloped piece of right-of-way that will obviously never be built upon. It will never be able to sustain vehicular travel. And it does present a liability exposure to the city as far as significant hazard. It's an invitation for people to congregate on that property. And so in that respect, it is a potential public nuisance that the city probably has concerns about mitigating. And absent them building their own fence to protect the public, it's incumbent upon the neighboring property to do so in their place. Thank you.
Mr. Vincent on the edge of his seat.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Vincent.
If I can offer some additional insight on... A setback is measured from the front lot line interior to the yard. The front lot line is defined in the municipal code as the line or lines dividing a lot from a public or private street. It also continues to say that the line or lines that divide a lot from an alley or a driveway shall not be considered a front lot line. And it doesn't speak to undeveloped right-of-way or not. However, for the purposes of the commission's understanding of this, an alley or a driveway, particularly an alley, is less traveled than a street. It has a different design. As you've seen on your site visit, the undeveloped area of this right-of-way has a different design than the street that's designed for vehicular use. And so, absent having a specific definition to deal with this particular situation, I'd recommend that the commission consider the area that is abutting, the undeveloped portion of the right-of-way is probably more akin to an alley or something lesser than that street than it is to a public or private street that's used for vehicles.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Comments? Commissioner Jordan?
Madam Chair, I'll just move along and make a motion to approve the project and the coastal development permit with the findings that are found in the staff report and subject to the conditions of approval.
Second. A motion made and seconded to approve the request. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Fence has been approved. That brings us to the next new item, B, application of Brian Kornal, architect for Black Volner, for 1255 Coast Village Road. Ms. Regal, when you're ready. We have a staff presentation.
Good afternoon, Chair Lodge and fellow commissioners. The project before you today is located on the west-east end of Coast Village Road at Coast Village Circle, and is located in the non-appellable jurisdiction of the coastal zone. The proposal includes demolition of all the existing structures, removal and replacement of two existing trees. One is onsite and one is in the public right-of-way, and construction of two residential condominiums totaling about 3,300 square feet with related one-car garages, and construction of 8,050 square feet of non-residential square footage above about 12,900 square foot subterranean garage. The project requires a modification for encroachments into the required front setback, transfer of existing development rights totaling 2,950 square feet, development plan approval for 5,950 net new square feet of commercial floor area, and a tentative subdivision map for two residential and up to seven non-residential condominium units. The project requires the coastal development permit because it is located in the non-appellable jurisdiction of the coastal zone. The project is required to do some pedestrian master plan improvements. And it's a little bit difficult to see on my slide here, but they are required to have a 12-and-a-half-foot-wide pedestrian through zone along Coast Village Road. You can see the purple line here is the location of the back of the curb. The red line is indicating where the edge of the easement is, that the applicant is proposing a variable with easement for sidewalk purposes at this location. So the red line becomes the new front property line, and then the 10-foot setback would be measured from the front property line, and that is indicated by the blue line on the screen. So you can see that there are some encroachments. The accessible access ramp right here along Coast Village Circle, portions of that will be greater than 10 inches tall and will require an encroachment due to a change in grade. Portions of the square footage of the non-residential building encroach largely because of this variable with easement right here. You can see where the existing front property line is, and it's moving to this red line. And then we have an issue where the Janine's Bakery tenant improvement is crossing over the property line, and the applicant is proposing to permit or allow the opportunity to permit this deck in its current location, and has requested to incorporate the deck encroachment into their mod request. It is a mixed-use project. We have about 3,500 square feet of office, our retail space, about 3,300 square feet of office space, 42-seat restaurant for a total of 8,047 square feet, requiring 40 parking spaces, and two residential condominium spaces that require one parking space each for a total of 42. The project has gone through a long required review process. We started with preliminary meetings and a pre-application review process back in May. The project went to architectural board review in August of 2011. We went to the Montecito Planning Commission for a courtesy review, where the comments were that they generally liked the mass balk and scale of the project and appreciated the breakup of the massing. They did have comments on parking access and parking circulation issues, and they requested that special attention be paid to the construction parking on the street. They did appreciate the overall design and character of the development being consistent with the surrounding neighborhoods. The project then went back to staff for the development application review for a determination of completeness. The project has been deemed complete and is here today at Planning Commission, step five. And then after any approvals are granted, this would return to the architectural board to review for project design approval and final approval. It was noted after the site visit that the minutes of the ABR form step two on August 22nd stated that the project was to return after the Montecito Planning Commission's review to the ABR prior to coming to this Planning Commission hearing. That did not occur. Staff contacted the applicant, advised them that that had occurred. We contacted the maker and seconder of the motion at ABR and asked their opinions on how to proceed, and we came to a group decision to allow it to continue forward because there were comments made with regards to neighborhood compatibility analysis. ABR will have a representative here, Paul Zink, that will speak to that issue. He's not here yet, but he should be arriving shortly. In addition to those required reviews, the project did go for several voluntary reviews. You can see on the slide, I have Coast Village Road Merchants Association. There were two reviews. Montecito Land Use Committee with two reviews, and the Citizens Planning Association Land Use Committee, they had one review. All of these reviews that were voluntary found the project to be generally acceptable in mass balk and scale and compatible with the neighborhood. There were a number of public comments received over the review process. We had two speakers, really one, Protect Our Village, that was generally in support of the project at ABR. They had a few concerns about height, which have been resolved. We had four speakers at the Montecito Planning Commission. Three were... Well, one was informational from the Montecito Association Land Use Committee, and two were in support, and one was in opposition. And the person that was in opposition was generally not in support of any progress. They didn't want to see that corner developed. We have received three letters that you have in your packet. Actually, that would be four, because I handed one to you, each of you, this morning or this afternoon, from the tenant at Janine's, and I did receive a phone call. And the concern was about the as-built deck and the tree removal from the tenant next door. Staff has reviewed the project for consistency with the local coastal plan and found that it met the required policies, applicable policies. And during the general plan consistency review, staff focused on a new policy ER-7, which is a Highway 101 setback. The applicant has incorporated several project design features into the project and reviewed the plan, Santa Barbara EIR, air quality analysis, and made conclusions in their applicant letter, and found that the potential air quality impacts were less than significant and were mitigated with any proposed design features. The project is proposing a transfer of existing development rights. The project at 114 East John and Ollie Street demolished 33,000 square feet of non-residential square footage. And in the staff report on page eight, I had indicated that none of the square footage had previously been allocated. However, Ellen Canto did have 6,000 square feet allocated from this sending site, but there is still ample square footage left over after that allocation. This project proposes 2,900 square feet be transferred to the site, and leaving a demolition credit on the sending site of over 24,000 square feet. Development plan approval of 5,950 square feet is required, and the project has been found to be sensitive to the style and character of the existing development along Coast Village Road, would not have an adverse impact on the neighborhood's aesthetics. A traffic study was prepared by ATE, which found that the project would not have a significant adverse impact on the traffic in the neighborhood. (end of transcript)
than it is to a public or private street that's used for vehicles.
Okay, thank you.
Got any other questions? Commissioner Jordan?
Madam Chair, I'll just move along and make a motion to approve the project and the coastal development permit with the findings that are found in the staff report and subject to the conditions of approval.
Second, a motion made and seconded to approve the request. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Fence has been approved. That brings us to the next new item, B, application of Brian Cornell, architect for Black Volner, for 1255 Coast Village Road. Ms. Regal, when you're ready. We have a staff presentation.
Good afternoon, Chair Large and fellow commissioners. The project before you today is located on the west-east end of Coast Village Road at Coast Village Circle and is located in the non-appellable jurisdiction of the coastal zone. The proposal includes demolition of all the existing structures, removal and replacement of two existing trees, one is onsite and one is in the public right-of-way, and construction of two residential condominiums totaling about 3,300 square feet with related one-car garages, and construction of 8,050 square feet of non-residential square footage above a about 12,900 square foot subterranean garage. The project requires a modification for encroachments into the required front setback, transfer of existing development rights totaling 2,950 square feet, development plan approval for 5,950 net new square feet of commercial floor area, and a tentative subdivision map for two residential and up to seven non-residential condominium units. The project requires the coastal development permit because it is located in the non-appellable jurisdiction of the coastal zone. The project is required to do some pedestrian master plan improvements. And it's a little bit difficult to see on my slide here, but they are required to have a 12 and 1/2-foot wide pedestrian through zone along Coast Village Road. You can see the purple line here is the location of the back of the curb. The red line is indicating where the edge of the easement is that the applicant is proposing a variable with easement for sidewalk purposes at this location. So the red line becomes the new front property line, and then the 10-foot setback would be measured from the front property line, and that is indicated by the blue line on the screen. So you can see that there are some encroachments. The accessible access ramp right here along Coast Village Circle, portions of that will be greater than 10 inches tall and will require an encroachment due to a change in grade. Portions of the square footage of the non-residential building encroach largely because of this variable with easement right here. You can see where the existing front property line is, and it's moving to this red line. And then we have an issue where the Janine's Bakery tenant improvement is crossing over the property line, and the applicant is proposing to permit or allow the opportunity to permit this deck in its current location and has requested to incorporate the deck encroachment into their mod request. It is a mixed-use project. We have about 3,500 square feet of office, our retail space, about 3,300 square feet of office space, 42-seat restaurant for a total of 8,047 square feet, requiring 40 parking spaces, and two residential condominium spaces that require one parking space each for a total of 42. The project has gone through a long required review process. We started with preliminary meetings and a pre-application review process back in May. The project went to Architectural Board Review in August of 2011. We went to the Montecito Planning Commission for a courtesy review, where the comments were that they generally liked the mass balken scale of the project and appreciated the breakup of the massing. They did have comments on parking access and parking circulation issues, and they requested that special attention be paid to the construction parking on the street. They did appreciate the overall design and character of the development being consistent with the surrounding neighborhoods. The project then went back to staff for the development application review for a determination of completeness. The project has been deemed complete and is here today at Planning Commission, step five, and then after any approvals are granted, this would return to the Architectural Board to Review for project design approval and final approval. It was noted after the site visit that the minutes of the ABR Form Step Two on August 22nd stated that the project was to return after the Montecito Planning Commission's review to the ABR prior to coming to this Planning Commission hearing. That did not occur. Staff contacted the applicant advising that that had occurred. We contacted the maker and seconder of the motion at ABR and asked their opinions on how to proceed, and we came to a group decision to allow it to continue forward because there were comments made with regards to neighborhood compatibility analysis. ABR will have a representative here, Paul Zink, that will speak to that issue. He's not here yet, but he should be arriving shortly. In addition to those required reviews, the project did go for several voluntary reviews. You can see on the slide I have Coast Village Road Merchants Association, there were two reviews, Montecito Land Use Committee with two reviews, and the Citizens Planning Association Land Use Committee, they had one review. All of these reviews that were voluntary found the project to be generally acceptable in mass balken scale and compatible with the neighborhood. There were a number of public comments received over the review process. We had two speakers, really one, Protect Our Village, that was generally in support of the project at ABR. They had a few concerns about height which have been resolved. We had four speakers at the Montecito Planning Commission. Three were, well, one was informational from the Montecito Association Land Use Committee, and two were in support and one was in opposition. And the person that was in opposition was generally not in support of any progress. They didn't want to see that corner developed. We have received three letters that you have in your packet, actually that would be four because I handed one you, to you, each of you this morning or this afternoon, from the tenant at Janine's, and I did receive a phone call. And the concern was about the as-built deck and the tree removal from the tenant next door. Staff has reviewed the project for consistency with the local coastal plan and found that it met the required policies, applicable policies. And during the general plan consistency review, staff focused on a new policy ER-7, which is a Highway 101 setback. The applicant has incorporated several project design features into the project and reviewed the plan, Santa Barbara EIR, air quality analysis, and made conclusions in their applicant letter and found that the potential air quality impacts were less than significant and were mitigated with any proposed design features. The project is proposing a transfer of existing development rights. The project at 114 East John and Ollie Street demolished 33,000 square feet of non-residential square footage. And in the staff report on page eight, I had indicated that none of the square footage had previously been allocated. However, Ellen Canto did have 6,000 square feet allocated from this sending site, but there is still ample square footage left over after that allocation. This project proposes 2,900 square feet be transferred to the site and leaving a demolition credit on the sending site of over 24,000 square feet. Development plan approval of 5,950 square feet is required, and the project has been found to be sensitive to the style and character of the existing development along Coast Village Road, would not have an adverse impact on the neighborhood's aesthetics. A traffic study was prepared by ATE, which found that the project would not have a significant adverse impact on the traffic in the neighborhood. And there has adequately served by water, by the Montecito Water District Certificate of Water Availability that is attached in your staff report. It also requires the tentative subdivision map. The new residential condominiums have several design standards and requirements listed in our ordinance. The project has met all those, and those are described in your staff report, but commercial condominiums do not have those same development standards. The project has been found to be categorically exempt using the infill exemption, Section 15332 of the California Environmental Quality Act. So with that, staff recommends that you approve the project, making the findings in Section Eight and subject to the conditions contained in Exhibit A contingent on City Council's adoption of criteria for implementation strategies for the implementation of ER-7, which Ms. Weiss is here to speak about.
Ms. Weiss. Thank you, Chair Large and Planning Commissioners. I'd just like to make a few additional comments regarding the new air quality policy. On the screen, should we need reference to it, is the language of the new policy, which, as I believe you're aware, was developed in the general plan update process and the environmental impact report that went along with it, where the city, in conjunction with the local air pollution control district and other specialists, looked at the issue of human health hazards related to living along the highway corridor or exposing sensitive receptors, people who are sensitive to air quality concerns. If there is land use and use of property along the highway corridor where people have extensive exposure to air pollution particulates, particularly, we looked at diesel emissions. And based on some guidelines that the California Air Resources Board and our local air pollution control district put out a number of years ago, the city took the position that there is a potential health hazard and that, like many other communities in California, we developed a policy direction for a buffer or setback along the freeway. You may also recall that during that process, there was quite a bit of discussion to the size of the buffer. At one time, based on the air pollution control district's recommendations, a 500-foot buffer was proposed, but based on the Santa Barbara specific study that we did, we felt justified in having a 250-foot buffer. And so what is to occur within that area and specifically how the city would examine projects within that buffer is still under development. We have had some follow-up meetings with the air pollution control district. If you can go to the next slide. This certainly is an evolving issue, and there are a number of ways to evaluate this concern. The professional that we had, have worked with during the preparation of the EIR followed a general screening model approach, which is completely valid. You will be hearing comments today, I think, or at least if you review the letter that we've received from Steve Johnson. He's took a different approach in terms of looking at an analysis model. One concern that staff at the city, as well as APCD, has is that models and assumptions can vary greatly, and we think that the better approach is really to look at what features and design in a project can reduce exposure concern in the first place and designing towards that because this really is not just a project-specific concern for just new projects. It really is a concern, you know, for human health, living anywhere along a busy travel way. In our community, the only roadway where this is of concern is Highway 101. But based on our discussions with the APCD, we are gathering more information about the effectiveness of landscape screening and other barriers. And I think you'd be happy to know that they actually do have a measurable and positive effect when substantial landscaping can be used as a barrier. So right now, you know, the language of the policy does say that we are looking for a project to satisfactorily reduce the effects. That's a general policy, you know, statement. It's not precise. But one of the things that we are doing, and you could go to the next slide, is on the city council agenda next Tuesday, February 14th in the afternoon session, we are going to counsel for an initial step to implement this policy. And the initial step recommended is that pending projects be exempted from strict application of the policy. However, I can tell you, in talking with any applicant that's been in the process so far, we have encouraged them to consider, as this applicant did, changes to the project that, again, would reduce concern. We have reviewed the pending project list, and we have approximately 16 pending projects with approximately 33 units. I'm saying approximately because some of the projects have been in the process for a little while and are changing. But in any event, that is the staff's recommendation, which we expect, based on a fairly standard practice of the city council, to apply new rules moving forward and often exempting prior projects. We expect that that recommendation will be received favorably. The second part of the recommendation is to direct staff to work with the council ordinance committee on further defining this criteria about moving buildings back and landscaping and so forth so that we have a more specific way to move forward during what we believe will be an interim period of time. I can tell you that we've had recent conversations with our professional consultant, and the information about the health levels and arranging setback area is already changed since, you know, we were doing our study with them a couple of years ago. And it's getting better. Basically, the pollutants related to, in particular, diesel particulates, given different regulations, fuel standards and such. But again, there is a general health concern, certainly, as well as, you know, noise issues along freeways. So having a new focus on appropriate design and concerns for projects along the freeway, we think is a good step for the city to take, but it is still a relatively new step that we're exploring at this time. So as Suzanne said, the staff recommendation is that your action be contingent upon council's action of next week. The applicant understands that. We had a discussion about whether or not this would come first or second and decided that, why don't we go ahead and hold the hearing with the commission? This is a good opportunity to have some additional discussion on this matter if, to assist you as well. So that's my additional comment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Weiss. Does that conclude the staff presentation?
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, and we'll hear from the applicant then. Mr. Cornell, you have 15 minutes.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, my name is Brian Cornell. With me today, if you'll switch me over, Suzanne, is Alberto Volner, the property owner, Ken Marshall from Dudek, our environmental planner, Scott Schell is here from ATE. If you have questions, and I believe Phil Soudin is going to be here as well, our landscape The site is obviously a very sensitive site. Thor killed Heseland, a good Dane who originally immigrated to solving and then came down to Santa Barbara and bought this property in 1966 and had his nursery here. Alberto bought the property a little more than a year ago, and from actually the heirs of the wife of Turk, as he became known as, Turk Heseland, who the wife had inherited in 1983 when Turk died. And since 1983, a guy named Sadomka, Ray Sadomka, has been operating the nursery. So it's been there, operating since essentially 66. Alberto was very clear to Ken and I from the very beginning that he wanted a project that was sensitive to the site, sensitive to the community, appropriate and beautiful. And he emphasized the community part of it because he felt very strongly that this was a legacy site in the Coast Village Road community, and he certainly knew of the history of what had gone on across the street at the 76 station and didn't want anything remotely similar to that. So we took that to heart and began the process of design. Now, one of the first things that I noticed when I went out to the site was this large podicarpus tree, which I assumed was part of the adjacent property. There you see the Janine's deck. And as you know, as we discussed, this, by the way, in an aerial is the podicarpus, and Janine's deck sits like this. As you know, we determined that the property line cuts through the middle of that deck, which was a surprise, obviously. If we go back in between the two properties and look at this condition, you can see that the deck is built right up and into the tree. In fact, its portions of it are actually nailed into the tree. So the first thing we did was had an arborist, Peter Nguyen, look at it, and he concluded that first the tree had been somewhere along the line, it was about 30 or 50 years old, probably. Somewhere along the line, it had been butchered pretty bad, and yet it was a healthy tree. But he was very concerned about the root structure down here because basically there was a retaining wall that was built right into it, and it was sitting on a grade change. So it was a very precarious situation, and at the end of the day, recommended that, you know, if this, in terms of long-term planning, this tree really should go, and it's certainly a liability. So with the knowledge of the property line, we actually, one of the first people that Alberto contacted was Janine's, and they indicated at that time that the tree was actually kind of a nuisance to them, but obviously wanted to keep their deck. So we concluded that the deck should remain, but that the tree should go, and we should find a location close to this because it clearly is a skyline tree and important that we should find a spot very close to this where we could plant an appropriate tree. And Phil's solution for an appropriate tree is a Monterey Cypress, which we'll see his plan in a moment. And then we set out to plan the property. Now, as any good architect like Bruce Bartlett knows, form follows parking. And we concluded early on that we needed to put the parking underground. So we pretty much went to the limits of the property line to come up with as ideal a parking scheme as possible. As you can see, it's 40 spaces. The site is ideal for this configuration because we are taking the access off the low point. Right now, pretty much the access is this curb cut that exists today into the nursery. And put it entirely in the ground below the project. Now Suzanne mentioned the pedestrian master plan, and this sort of explains that three-dimensional setback. In order to get the most out of the parking, the parking structure does then, or will go, under the actual sidewalk, which, you know, you may not know this, but there are a number of buildings in Santa Barbara where it's very typical, especially older buildings, where the basements actually went under the sidewalk. So it's a fairly typical condition. So this is our site plan, as Suzanne has showed you. A restaurant on the corner, and this idea really came out of initially working with the Coast Village Road merchants. They conveyed to Alberto early on that they felt a restaurant anchoring this site was really an important feature for Coast Village Road. So that, we elected to do that, and then the remainder of the ground floor is the retail space of 3,500 square feet. And then we have another driveway that serves exclusively two garages, which then serve the residential units, which are back behind the commercial via this lovely little courtyard space. And you can see from this plan that we have carved away the building to accommodate the Janine's deck. These are the setbacks, which Suzanne also showed you, and you can actually see that we designed the building to fit to this, to the property, which was kind of, you know, it kind of adds to the character. There are some buildings along Coast Village Road already that have that sort of, you know, angle and whatnot. But of course, and, you know, we talked about the balcony at the site visit, but we realized that was going to result in a mod, which we reviewed with Planning Commission at Montecito as well as ABR early on, to allow for a covered Monterey-style balcony. But frankly, until pretty late in the process, none of us, staff or us, realized, well, of course, when you widen the sidewalk, then the presumed property line is the back sidewalk, and therefore your 10-foot setback is back further than where you've designed the face of the building. And so we had to add essentially to that mod for the balcony, that little sliver of building that is about 1 foot 8 inches. And rather than push it back, we felt it was an appropriate mod, particularly given the character of this whole side of Coast Village Road. So there's our property line today. We obviously had to give up effective property for that 12-foot sidewalk, and then the setback ends up having that sliver of the front of those buildings as well as the balcony, which we knew required a modification anyway and had received ABR support for. So when you look at the south side of Coast Village Road, you know, the first little group of buildings that always come to my mind is this little cluster. I mean, they're lovely little buildings, and to me, this is the quintessential character of Coast Village Road, and I admit is where I kind of became enamored with the idea of the Monterey balcony there at the jewelry store. When you look at this in terms of the walking street, you have 12 feet between the face of curb and the face of the building. So the sidewalk there is about 6 feet. And that is a pretty typical condition as you walk up and down Coast Village Road. And when I then started walking up, and this is a 7-foot sidewalk, and this is Paseo Mariposa, which was built to the standards, there were no pedestrian master plan at that point, and so the sidewalk wasn't widened, but the building was set back 10 feet from its property line. Going on up, some buildings get very close. Here you have a 7-foot sidewalk, and the building is 12 feet from the face of curb. This condition is actually the deepest setback from face of curb. It's 18 feet to the face of that building or to the columns from the face of curb. Then continuing, here's Janine's Bakery, of course, and then here is our site, which currently has a 6-foot sidewalk. So to visualize what our project will look like, here is the 12 and 1/2-foot sidewalk, and then the building itself to compare to what I just showed you, from the face of curb to even that portion where we're asking for the modification, it's 20.5 feet. And then, of course, you go on down the road as you approach the hotel, and it narrows back again. So I would wager that it's going to be a very long time before many properties along here develop that 12-foot standard, which to me is really justification to maintain that scale and character of Coast Village Road. The other mod that Suzanne mentioned is the deck to facilitate that. There it is again. And then finally, that accessible ramp, which we've put in not only provide accessibility from Coast Village Circle, but more importantly, for access from the restaurant to the trash enclosures which are down in this corner. This is Phil's landscape plan. Here is the Monterey Cypress. He's proposed crepe myrtle, which he's reviewed with the street tree committee as new street trees. As I mentioned to you at the site visit, we're going to actually plant the magnolia in the ground, and then I think he's thinking cassia here along Coast Village Circle. Here in his plan, you can really see the charm of the little paseo that we have coming from Coast Village Road back to the elevator and then back into that residential courtyard. We really want this building to be authentic Spanish colonial revival and really feel as if it has been there for a long time. The second floor is just a little over 3,000 square feet of office. There's an exterior exit balcony here that serves the stairs and elevator, and then the upstairs are bedrooms for the residential units. And then finally, the roof, we've accommodated solar panels, mechanical equipment, of course, the restaurant, we've kept it, another reason we've kept it separate is because of its mechanical system and exhaust. And then we actually designed into the project two rooftop decks because there's really extraordinary mountain views from this site once you get up that would be of great benefit to the residents. So looking at the look of the building, again, the restaurant, we wanted it to be one-story. As I showed you on my walkthrough on Coast Village Road, the scale is predominantly one and two stories. We wanted to break the scale up of the buildings. Here's that Monterey balcony. And the over, the largest height of the buildings then is consistently 28 feet from the elevation of Coast Village Road. This is looking from Coast Village. This is looking from Coast Village Circle. This is the area where that mod is for the ramp. Of course, we're choosing to ensconce that in stone wall. And then you can see the entrance to the parking structure here, that driveway up to the residential units and the courtyard beyond. Cutting a section through the building, this is the grade of the nursery today, so it slopes away. It's probably the natural grade that was along all of those properties along Coast Village Road. And of course, that's the height limit that's allowed in this zone. And again, the building limits that we've set for ourselves is the 28 feet, with the exception of the little elevator tower, which just peaks above that, and some chimneys. This is the rear of the property, adjacent to our southern neighbor. There's that 28 feet, but from the parking lot of that building, it's 37 feet to the highest point of the building. Of course, that building will block the majority of this view, and then we also have the additional screening, and the buildings will step back. In fact, I've cut a section through that portion so that you can see it. I blow it up right here. So this is their existing parking lot, which you saw when we were back in the back there. Their existing retaining wall, which we're preserving, we're going to set our building back, plant this area, and then Phil has envisioned a screening element that'll really end up being very similar to what is there today, so that we just have a nice green screen that'll be the wall height, plus an additional six feet or so. And then the freeway view, staff ask us to do a photo sim of what the buildings would look like from the freeway. You really can't see it northbound. The only place you see it is from the southbound lanes, and this would be the result of those residential units from that vantage point. And then this is the elevation from the Janine's side, which really won't be seen. And then just a couple of quick sections through this courtyard, which we really are excited about, the feeling of this, in both the residence, it becomes the entrance to the residence, but obviously will be a feature for those offices above. Here's the door to one of the units, the garage doors serving that driveway area. And this illustrates also how we've really tried to cascade the building back from Coast Village Circle, particularly in relationship to our neighbor. And this, I think, will give you a really good sense of the building in three dimension. I can slow this down if you'd like me to, but you can see again how we've tried to break the building, so it feels like it's smaller elements, it's not one big building. You see that paseo going back towards the courtyard and the elevator, the one-story scale. The octagon really worked well with the geometry of the site. And then beginning back down Coast Village Circle, you can begin to see the residential units in that driveway that will serve the residences, and then the opening into the subterranean garage below. And then just back from sort of that freeway view again, and then boom, coming back to my new car. No. It's not my new car. So that's it. How'd I do, Sheila?
Fifteen minutes and 32 seconds.
But I went over. I was led to do better.
That's okay.
So I'll be happy to answer questions, and the other folks here, as I mentioned, can as well.
Mr. Zink has arrived. Would you like to make comments representing the Architectural Board of Review?
Madam Chair, and the Planning Commission Board, I'm Paul Zink, and I'm the Vice Chair of ABR. I was the secondor of this motion when it came to ABR. There were six members who reviewed it, and all of us found it to be acceptable. We liked the direction it was going. I listened to the video this morning, so I'm fresh on what we talked about, even though it was in August of last year. So I want to highlight a couple of points. Sorry. I have to go by my memory. I can't read my notes fast enough. Basically, the site planning was, we thought it was fantastic site planning. The one-story building on the corner with the restaurant, fabulous. Parking underground, fabulous. The one thing we did not have an opportunity to study or to scrutinize was the south elevation that was facing the freeway, and the west elevation that was facing Janine. Those drawings weren't drawn. We had a couple of questions about the massing in that zone, but it was nothing that we were alarmed by. We just said, when you come back to us, bring some additional information, which is the sections cut through the building that I saw he has here, but the board has not seen those, because we couldn't understand enough about the grades between the adjacent building and what he was proposing. So that's what we wanted him to bring back to us, but nobody had any concerns about the project. We felt it was moving in the right direction, and positive comments from all six members.
Thank you, Mr. Zink. Any questions for Mr. Zink? All right. Oh, Mr. Thompson, Commissioner Thompson.
Madam Chair, I had a question for the applicant when Zink's finished.
Well, let's, shall we wait? I'm pretty sure there's public comment. I see the owners, the Hardys are here, the owners of Janine's.
I don't have any greens lips, but, oh. If anyone would like to speak, please fill out a greenslip from the back and get one to me.
All right. This is the time for the public hearing. And a request to speak from Gordon Allison and Eleanor Hardy. The Hardy family is here, and they are the owners of Janine's. Whichever of you wishes to come first.
I have some...
Mr. Hardy?
Oh, excuse me. Gordon Hardy. These are some photos in a book that I just put through, just if it would help explain the position that we're speaking to. And thank you again for allowing us to come and present our proposal. I felt in my position, I just work there. My wife is the president, my daughter is the vice president, CEO of our Janine's Restaurants. At the time that we were first introduced to this project, Mr. Valner had come to us, and very gracious, and he was very friendly, and spoke to us about his proposed project. And this was about one year ago. At that time, we didn't really have too much of a fix on anything, because he had just purchased the property, and I don't believe he had any plans at that particular time in a drawing. But during the discussion, it was brought up that the tree was on the property line, and would we share in the cost of cutting down that tree? Well, we sort of chuckled to ourselves, because we had about 10 years ago, or thereabouts, we've been at that site for over 12 years. We had made a request through the Tobes Group to have the tree removed, because it was very messy, and it was dropping down on the deck and the food and so forth. So no commitment was made by either party. And I'm explaining this because there's a sequence in which my daughter will expand upon, and my wife. The tree was an issue, and when we were turned down, at that time, we were told by the city that we couldn't cut the tree down, we took it upon ourselves to have it trimmed and cleaned up, and watered and fertilized so the tree would survive. The deck that was there was there prior to our getting the lease. Now, the lease was presented to us in 1998, and we were shown the property line as the roughage, the rock, the concrete wall, and there are some of the pictures. And you will see that it was a very clearly defined property line separating the two properties. In fact, Michael Tobes and Dick Scobie built the building in 1967, I believe it was, and they showed that as being the property line. So it was always generally accepted, okay, that's the line. We felt the same thing about the deck. So we didn't follow through much more, because we felt the property line was there, the tree was on the property line. Even the Tomoka Brothers, who are the landlords, and the Tobes Group felt that that was a property line, and we were going to have to work out how to remove that tree to the satisfaction of all parties. We weren't going to resist it, it was okay. Then we had a meeting, like, I believe, in October, November of last year. And at that time, on the back of the little passout that I gave you, this property line was presented to us, and we were shocked. It showed that the property line was about six feet, depending on where you are in that line, but that as a tenant, we lost about six feet of our deck, and out in the front. So I went down to the city, and I pulled up all the archives, and I found that all the documents that were down there, that I could look at, showed that the property line was where the physical wall was constructed. In fact, if you look at that little map, the other thing is that there's a utility box right there, and it showed that the property line was to the east of that utility box. So it just wasn't an issue until we saw this map. And then it started to get a little sticky, because we realized that Mr. Valner and his project, that they were going to remove this deck. So I just wanted to point out that, as a restaurant, we have prided ourselves in doing everything that we can to meet all the demands placed upon us. And when we found that we were going to lose this deck in the Montecito Janine's Restaurant, it was a devastating fact, because how do we handle that? How do we lose that amount of deck and tables? There were seven tables that would be affected, about 25 seats and so forth. So it's a considerable amount of income. Well, Mr. Valner did, to his credit, and the architects, they did make a presentation and notch out the space so that we could retain the deck. And that was a pleasant surprise, but we didn't learn of this until in December, because when we got this map, we spent about $2,700 getting a survey made to verify this. I just couldn't figure out how that could have been six feet off, when the Tobes Group built their building and so forth. So we went along until we got our survey map, which was in December. Now, in December, we finally realized that, you know, we have an issue here that we wanted to resolve as a neighbor. He is coming into Santa Barbara, and I feel with all good intentions, and he has the right to build on his property, but it has a horrendous impact on our property.
Mr. Hardy?
Do I have time?
I should have...
That's all right.
Should have told you that...
Two minutes?
Well, I wasn't going to limit you just to two, but it's over six minutes. The, we have copies, the Planning Commission does have copies of the letters between the attorneys.
Yes.
So, and we did discuss this issue when we were on our site visit on Tuesday. I mean, we, so we know what the physical...
Oh, okay.
Issues are.
All right. Okay. Then my daughter would like to have a few words.
Okay.
And my wife, please.
All right. All right. Ms. Hardy, if you could limit...
I'm Allison.
Allison, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Allison Hardy.
This project, we welcome Black Valner to our community. We appreciate everything you have done. I'm a Santa Barbara, and I've grown up in this town, and I think this is going to complement Montecito.
Ms. Hardy, if you could speak to the microphone.
It will complement Montecito. The problem is, it's going to devastate Janine's. We are a small little business. We will find a way to get through this. But for us, the removal of the deck, the replacement of the deck, is going to affect us operationally. I don't know how we're going to get around that. We can quarantine aspects of this building, but as you all know, coming to Janine's, it's a tiny space. And we'll get through that deck removal, tree removal, but it's going to be tough. That's phase one. We can get our heads around that. Phase two scares the living daylights out of us. This is our, this location supports our other locations. We are closed three days out of the year. We are closed only three days out of the year, because we can't afford to be closed any more than that. That has been the way we've run Janine's from the beginning, and I think that's what's kept us going through multiple recessions, through Starbucks, you know, all these things that keep coming into our communities. What scares us is how are we going to operate on a daily basis with this enormous project going on, probably six feet away from our restaurant, where we serve food in the morning and afternoon? We don't serve at night. How am I going to staff my business? How am I going to keep the customers from leaving us? How can I say, oh, no, I know there's a bomb practically going off, they're digging up the dirt, but go ahead and eat our eggs benedict? I don't know how I'm going to do this operationally.
Ms. Hardy, you know, this, we're really here to discuss the project.
Okay.
And I understand you have problems, so if you could wrap it up.
So what I'm asking is, as this, we accept that this project is going in, and we want to be a willing partner of it, but we're asking the commission and future approval process to consider Janine's, to help us mitigate through restriction of hours when they work, no Saturdays, please, containing some of the dust and the dirt and the pollution by maybe some kind of screening, some kind of noise walls, where they park, where the construction, those kinds of things. We're asking you to consider those as this project moves forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Eleanor Hardy?
I'm Eleanor Hardy. I think I'm the president in name only of this company. However, I do want to tell you, we've been in business for, since 1992...
Pull the microphone down, so...
Since 1992. And we are members of this community. We represent a small business that's been successful, as my daughter said, through many recessions. And we have kept the people that work here in Santa Barbara, and we now have about 70 employees. We've had as many as 120. We are representative of what's good in this community, and we want you to consider giving us an opportunity to kind of work these problems out a little bit, and see that we can survive in this community. We are a part of it. I've employed people who still work for us, who have worked for us for 20 years. And it will impact some of them, as has the recession. As a small business owner, we really want you to at least look at what the project will do to Janine's revenues, and therefore, to the revenues or the paychecks of the people who work for us. We are a small business, we're successful, and my family and I hope that you will consider that part of this. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have a request to speak from Dani Copas. He'll be followed by Lubbe Carlton. And if you could keep your comments to two minutes, please, I'd be appreciative.
Thank you very much. Dani Copas with the Coast Village Business Association, Montecito Inn and Coast Village Inn on Coast Village Road. Just going to kind of read briefly from some notes that I made, partly based on some of the other speakers, too. So I can't speak much about the details regarding the issues concerning the neighboring properties, but I do know that there are some of the finest businesses and people that this community has to offer. So I hope, and I know that the association probably hopes, that a mutually beneficial resolution can be found, because we, the association, believe that for the most part, at least from what we have seen, this is the type of project that should be approved for this area for our community. Aesthetically speaking, size-wise, use of the land, and in what the building offers to the community to allow the community to interact with the building and really benefit from its development, we like this building and this proposal. You heard a few deep breaths when the currently accepted height limit along the entire road was revealed. So we appreciate that Mr. Valner and his team see the greater value that exists in creating a structure that complements the surrounding area, as opposed to dominating it. This project, from what we can see, mostly falls within the recommendations and guidelines within the vision plan that Coast Village Business Association worked with the public business owners and property owners to create. Therefore, we approve the design of this project as currently presented, and with the concerns of the neighboring businesses, we hope that something can mutually beneficially be worked out, so that everyone is okay. Okay? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Copas. Lubbe Carlton? Luba Carlton?
I'm a resident at 1220 Coast Village Road. We have 30, it's a condominium complex. It has, we have 38 units. At present, a concern of ours is the traffic. Since Caltrans has diverted the on-ramp to Olive Mill from Hot Springs, around 2:00 in the afternoon to 3:00 in the afternoon to 4:00 in the afternoon, there's many times gridlock. As a matter of fact, it's at times impossible to even get into our driveway or out of our driveway. So our hope is that as the project moves forth, that something could be done with Caltrans to re-divert the on-ramp, not from Hot Springs to Olive Mill, because it's just, it's like gridlock on the freeway. And other than that, the design of the projects is pleasing, is in concert with what our community holds, but definitely if something needs to be done until Caltrans would divert the on-ramp situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carlton. All right, that concludes. Anyone else wishing to comment on the speak to this project? There are no more requests to speak for us. All right, we will now go back to close the public hearing. And is there additional response by the applicant at this point?
I can come up.
Mr. Colonel.
Chair Lodge, because I know there may be questions, but just to, a few clarifications on the deck. Number one is the building code. So it's our understanding that there was really never a permit issued, and there may be some confusion about that, but the problem is, is the deck was built right to the property line, and the building code requires certain construction type when it's, when something's built right up to the property line. So that is an issue that we're assuming, you know, unfortunately, Janine's, you know, will have, this project has sort of unearthed that, and it will have to be dealt with. It would certainly be my choice that somehow they could be exempted so that the deck could just remain until such time as they cease to have the business there or whatever, and then it could be rectified because it's, I don't believe it's a health or safety issue really. And, as I mentioned, we've designed the building to assume a property line between the deck and our building so that there's adequate clearances. So that might be something that you at least recommend to the building official to consider so that they don't have to actually demolish the deck. Because again, as I said in my opening comments, one, Alberto wants, community cooperation wanted it from the very beginning, and two, the very first thing we decided was to leave that deck alone and to work around it. So that's the issue. As far as construction, having gone through this with St. Francis, we're very good with mitigating construction issues. So I think an adequate wall that's built, you know, between the properties and appropriate construction mitigations are going to really significantly mitigate the concerns that you just heard from the Janine folks. And, you know, the worst part of the construction clearly is going to be when the hole's getting dug, and that's a relatively short period of time, you know. So it's not, it's not a matter of years, it's a matter of weeks. So let's clarify that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Colonel. Commissioner Thompson?
I have a question for the applicant. Brian, excellent project as usual.
Thank you.
But I notice in your parking garage, you've not carried your three-dimensional easement concept that you did for the sidewalk down for the deck area. Is that because if you tried to put the parking garage underneath the deck, that there would be construction issues that would impact the deck?
Well, let me go to that slide. So here's our parking structure, and there is that sidewalk. And so I'm not sure I understand the question. We're obviously building the garage beyond the sidewalk to accommodate the parking.
Yeah, down in the northwest corner, the garage and parking doesn't extend underneath the deck area. Well, I would consider that the northeast.
I'm sorry, here.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I mean, we carved that away.
And that's to...
For the deck.
To preclude any impact to the deck while you were building underneath it? Because you're going to build underneath.
No, we're not going to, no, we're staying completely clear of the deck. We are going to build underneath the future sidewalk, but we are not going to build under the existing sidewalk. So the existing sidewalk will be able to be retained, we'll put presumably a construction fence on our property line, and then the sidewalk will be built at the very end of the construction over the top of our, you know, structure for the deck. But this area was carved away, and, you know, again, it obviously was convenient because of the configuration of the parking to do it in this location, but we not only stayed clear of the deck, but we also provided an adequate amount of planting area to put in like a 72-inch box tree to get a significant tree to replace the tree that would be removed.
Okay. The other question I have has to do with the mod for the building along Coast Village Road. I got the impression from your presentation that the building had been designed when you realized that the pedestrian master plan easement would require that the building was actually in now what would become the setback. So am I reading that right? Rather than redesign the building, just leave it the way it was and ask for a mod?
What, along the way here, we were having healthy arguments with staff about what the appropriate sidewalk width should be. Because if you, if you look at the pedestrian master plan, it talks about different widths, and I was advocating a 10-foot sidewalk, particularly given the character of Coast Village Road as opposed to going to the 12-foot. But staff had previously mandated the 12-foot section for the price project across the street, so they wanted to be consistent with that. And so all the way along there, then, we were trying to avoid the loss of too much property because, again, you can see from this diagram, let me move to that, you know, that we're setback well behind the 10-foot setback when you measure it from our property line. Unfortunately, and again, I think it was all of our mistakes, we didn't realize until late in the process here, well after the project had gone through DART and was actually being teed up to come to you all, that in fact, we hadn't measured that 10 feet from the back of sidewalk, and consequently, a mod would be required for that 1 foot 8 inches.
Back of the new sidewalk.
Correct. And so, you know, my feeling, and it was very strong, that you look at the character of Coast Village Road, and this is an area where a mod is appropriate because the buildings typically are closer to the street, and it has a more urban character. And so, you know, 1 foot 8 inches wasn't much. It meant we were able to preserve our square footage, which is obviously important to Alberto, and it seemed like a very reasonable mod out of the circumstances. So that's what happened.
Technically, there's no reason that you couldn't move that particular wall back, even if you kept your Monterey overhanging balcony?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Chair Lodge?
Yes, Mr. Colonel.
Just to add to that, a little bit to that discussion, there is, there was a project about two years ago that the planning commission approved at 15 South Hope, which had the exact same situation. I mean, almost, almost to the letter. They had an underground parking garage. They were required to dedicate land at the surface to be a public sidewalk, and they were allowed to have the garage go underneath that sidewalk. And they also asked for a modification because of, because they were basically, you know, giving that much land to the city for a sidewalk, they asked for a modification to allow their building to be about the same distance, eight feet into a 10-foot setback, something like that. Sorry, two feet into a 10-foot setback, you know, about the same thing as being requested here. So we looked, we found, you know, we remember that, that project and found it to be almost the same, which is why we also recommend approval of that modification.
All right.
Madam Chair?
Other questions? Oh, Ms. Regal?
I just wanted to explain that ABR was aware of the access ramp being an encroachment and the deck being encroachment and the Monterey balcony, but not the facade of the building will now be a mod. So they did not assess that when they reviewed the project, just for your knowledge.
Thank you. All right. Questions for staff? Mr. Commissioner Bartlet?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Suzanne, can you elaborate a little on the staff report on page four, your chart under the zoning ordinance consistency? Somehow you flagged the 37-foot building height as being a modification, which I think it must be an error.
Correct. There was a previous explanation as to the subterranean garage.
So the footnote was for something else?
Yes, and it didn't get removed.
And then if you go back to your page one on your staff report, when you're, you know, in the project description, you're talking about that 37 feet as being measured from the finished grade of the garage to the ridge of the second floor. I didn't realize, this is new to me, that when you're doing, you know, subterranean garages, that you're actually measuring the building height from the floor of the subterranean garage. That seemed contrary to at least my prior understanding of how building height was measured.
Ms. Regal?
They, 37-foot was the apparent height.
Okay, so that's from the circle. Okay, it's worded the finish of the garage, that's why I was curious.
But it gets to the apparent height as you view it from Coast Village Circle.
Right, so it's the adjacent grade outside the garage. Okay, that clarifies that. I had questions that I saw relative to the applicant letter, kind of triggered it for me. So it's labeled different places in here in terms of the size of the restaurant. I've seen 40 seats, I've seen 42 seats in the applicant letter, and then it also goes on to describe the 20 seats on the exterior deck, and yet when I look at the analysis for parking, it's all based on the smaller number, 40 seats. It's not based on the deck capacity, and the traffic study is not based on deck capacity. So I'd like to at least understand why or why not on that delta.
Ms. Regal?
So the current square footage of the restaurant is 1,257. It's 42 seats, and that's the internal seating. When the exterior or outdoor seating is a factor, we look at what is the ratio from indoor to outdoor seating, and if it's less than 50%, we don't use it to calculate the parking.
Okay.
So at this point, it's one parking space for every three seats for a total of 13 spaces for the restaurant.
All right, that clarified. I just wondered why it wasn't included, but that explains it then. So there's a 50% threshold for the additive outdoor seating?
Correct.
Okay. That's it for my questions.
Okay. Commissioner Schwartz?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to start with some environmental questions. I'm wondering, Mr. Colonel, I don't know if you're in the best position to answer this, in reading the Montecito Water District memo, or perhaps Mr. Marshall from DUDAC, I'm wondering how the anticipated water usage that's outlined in this memo compares to current water usage on the property? And how the Montecito Water District came to a decision that the anticipated usage was acceptable when I've seen some other recent projects that seem to be, we're almost at the cusp of a moratorium in Montecito.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, Ken Marshall with DUDAC, representing the applicant. We met many, many times with the district and the district manager. We used actually tenure history and their methodologies to determining what the existing demand is, and then we also used the City of Santa Barbara's water duty factors to determine based on the proposed project what the water demand would be. And if you look at the two, the existing and the proposed, they're within like, I think it's one-tenth of one acre foot. And therefore, we were able to get a letter from the district saying that they thought that was literally blink your eyes and it's the same. So it was basically net sum zero with their concern about water. It was one of the first things that staff asked for, and we were able to achieve and get a water district letter saying that basically there'd be no impact and they could supply the water. As you know, there's an existing nursery there, and that is a fairly large water demand, and therefore that's why I think the numbers are what they are.
I see. Okay. Thank you for that. Then I'd like to go to parking. How does the one per three seats compare to what's been approved elsewhere on Coast Village Road in relatively recent times?
Ms. Regal?
Chair Lodge, Commissioner Schwartz. The parking ordinance has changed over the years, so many of the existing restaurants were calculated on a different measurement. It used to be calculated on a per-square-foot basis. Commercial was one per 500. So you'll find that there are a lot of places where parking wasn't adequately met in the past to our current standard. So those areas are existing non-conforming. But when a new restaurant would occupy a retail space, they would have to provide the net difference of what would have been required for the existing improvement and what they're proposing. So they have to provide the parking for just the proposed new.
Is, can you just tell me, is there, would there be another example on Coast Village Road of a restaurant that was required to come in at 1 to 3 that's there now? Did any other have to meet this threshold within the timeframe of this requirement? Trotteria Mall, you know, I'm thinking across the street or...
The only one I can think of off the top of my head is Cava at 1212 Coast Village Road. It was developed a long time ago as an ancillary used to a motel, and when they've done upgrades over the years, they've had to provide the one-per-three-seat ratio, and we developed a non-conforming parking credit.
And what are the proposed hours of the restaurant? Or the, I mean, is it going to cover lunch and dinner? Do we know yet?
No, we don't. At this point, we don't have a user for the restaurant.
Okay, because I think that could have an effect on the impacts for Coast Village. I think lastly, I want to ask a question about the status of the conversation between Mr. Valner or your company and the Hardys. In reading all of our documentation and hearing the comments today, I'm not sure I'm clear as to where you are in your ongoing negoti, or your current, where's the current negotiation headed at this point?
Well, hopefully it's headed towards, hopefully it's headed towards a resolution. We basically are establishing the willingness to grant an easement for the deck to remain in perpetuity and to get the modification here at the planning commission. So again, as far as we're concerned, we're accommodating the deck, and it can simply remain. Now, there are, as you've seen in the letters, arguments for prescriptive rights and those kind of things, so that's got to be resolved at this point, obviously, between the attorneys, but I'm confident from the sounds of it that that will be able to be resolved because everybody wants the deck to remain. And then after that gets resolved, which again, I'm sure will, there is this building code issue, which will be the next piece of it, which is probably the biggest hardship to the Hardys if they have to tear that deck out and rebuild it, and I would hope there would be some way that that could be avoided.
Okay. And Mr. Vincent, does the concept of prescriptive rights, should that enter into any of our considerations today in terms of the status of their legal discussions versus what decisions we might make today?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, the simple answer is no. The added answer I would give you is that your purview is to review the land use that's proposed for this lot, and the applicant has, as they've described, carved out this location in the corner of their lot. As far as their application is concerned, they're not proposing any new buildings there. They've carved out the subterranean garage from that area, and so it's kind of, as far as your action today, it's kind of a black spot but for the modification request that is, would accommodate the either continued existence of the deck in its current form or the reconstruction of the deck if that is required. And just while I'm speaking, I have, I don't have enough information to give you any intelligent answers regarding the building officials prerogative of what could remain, whether it could remain, whether something needs to be done. Quite honestly, I didn't get that information, and so I'm not prepared to really comment on that. I would go as far as to say that really it wouldn't be appropriate at this place for the commission to make any statements regarding the continued existence or nonexistence of that deck or how it needs to be reconstructed until the... of that deck, or how it needs to be reconstructed until the building official has had an opportunity to review it, review the documentation for it, and make a decision based on the facts.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Jordan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Cornell, I think I can lead you right through several of these very quickly. The only bicycle parking you're proposing is down in the garage?
Yes.
Remember this conversation from?
We have lots of sidewalk, though, to put additional parking on there.
And so if I was to eventually get to that point where you would look for some improvements to make in that area, you'd probably look for some space, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The, you make, you make the point that you actually, by providing all that, the 40 spaces underground, will actually improve the on-street parking. My question to you would be, if I'm coming up on Coast Village Road and I'm not a frequent guest of your new project, how would I actually know that those 40 spaces exist turning around the corner and going down a ramp?
Well, that's a good question. I mean, the first time, the first time you might not know, but probably after visiting the shop or the office or the restaurant, you would know, you know, the next time. And, you know, relative to operationally, I mean, clearly something like this is going to require, you know, security at night so that vagrants don't hang out in it. I think the good thing about it, though, is that because we're looking at retail office uses that are likely to be closed at night, you know, we have talked with Alberto about creating a scenario where it could possibly help to be available during evening hours for some of the restaurants that are underserved right now on Coast Village Road.
But there's obviously, you know, like I'd say signage in Montecito, like I'm obviously just not going in that direction, but there's.
Yeah, I mean, I hate to have a sign on Coast Village Road that says, "Park here."
But the, but you do make the point several times that your contention is that the 40 spaces you're gaining will actually relieve the, whatever we call the little parking area there on Coast Village Road of that spaces. At the risk of sounding like a comment, I don't know if that's a fair statement to make, because if I was coming down there, I wouldn't know that you have to turn around the corner and dive into a garage. I would be looking for the on-street parking as the first.
I understand. But obviously, we are fully parked, and so that parking ends up being surplus.
Was the removal of the large tree in the corner, that the potocarpus?
Yes.
Say it again. Was that part of your presentation specifically that you were going to remove it to all the neighborhood groups and the business groups that you made?
Yes.
Okay, good.
In fact, this presentation, with the exception of adding some of those photos of Coast Village Road, is pretty much what I gave to the Montecito Planning Commission, by the way.
And then, will you recall off the top of your head what the height access to the underground garage will be?
Well, we are planning right now a 12-foot floor-to-floor clear height, which from our experience, that will give us the necessary clearance for the 8-foot-to-accessible clearance, plus all the plumbing and stuff that will be coming down into that garage.
And then when I, when I look at the site plan for the, for the only location that's shown for trash, there's only one, right?
Well, we actually have two. We have a trash area specifically for the residents. Let me show you. It may be a little hard to see here, but we have the trash for the residents in this location, and then we have the trash for the commercial uses outside.
Okay, and so a commercial use obviously can't cut the corner because of the ramps. And so they will basically, at some point, either walk around the corner or come through the passeo and then go out on the street?
Yeah, I mean, that again, I visualize that the ramp that comes down in this location will be the primary access for the commercial users to gain access to that trash.
And all that was?
Or the, you know, they could use the elevator, but I think it's more likely that they'll take it outside through the ramp.
And all that was on the site plan for ABR, right? Looked at that.
You know, I'm, I don't recall whether the ramp was there. I know we hadn't identified that as a ramp, as a mod at that time, but there was, the ramp was there.
Okay, super. And then I think you're off the hook. I have a couple of questions for staff. The site plan shows, just has a couple of words, "outdoor seating near the corner in front of the restaurant." And I'm just wondering how those two words work into whatever the restraints are with the pedestrian master plan in that particular area?
Ms. Regal?
One moment, let me get my PowerPoint back up.
And so they're very close to, the grade in there, only maybe a little to the left on my set of plans. It just says "outdoor seating" on my set of plans.
Stacy Wilson with Transportation Planning. The, that is outside of the area that the pedestrian master plan has carved away, is the way that we had planned it. Am I, are we seeing things differently?
No, I guess, so I guess more specifically, I mean, there's been talk on the variable setback and the side, and the width of the sidewalks. And the applicant's done a great job on the width of the sidewalks, but then obviously, if there's some outdoor sitting there, seating there, it plays with the width of the sidewalk. And so how, how does that approval process work, or is there a policy there on how much space they can take up on that sidewalk?
I think I can elaborate on that a little bit more, is that there is a process within the city for outdoor seating. And that is, that is, that permit or process is hosted in the engineering division of my department of public works. There are, usually, I think the consideration is railings and clear sidewalk, and it's six feet that needs to remain. So each, each project is evaluated individually, and I know that, that outdoor seating is valued in Santa Barbara, like sidewalk seating, I'll call it sidewalk seating, is valued in Santa Barbara. And if, you know, there's a review process, there's an opportunity for comment within that as well. So we would get six feet.
Okay. And then where does?
I'm here.
Oh, sorry.
I want to further explain that the red line that you see on my site plan is actually the front property line, so that is on the private property.
Okay.
It wouldn't require an encroachment permit for outdoor dining.
Okay.
They would be taking tables and chairs, they wouldn't be leaving them outside in their front setback, but.
Okay.
They are going to use that area. Janine's deck out here, you can see that it extends beyond property lines. That did get an encroachment permit back in 98, and that's what Stacy was referring, that you get up to six feet.
Okay.
Okay.
I just want to be clear that.
Colonel?
We are, we're designing the outdoor seating to be outside of that 12-foot sidewalk. So we're not proposing any outdoor seating. Now, I suppose a restaurateur, if they wanted to, could do that, but frankly, the way that we've imagined this restaurant with the 42-seat limitation, and then up to 50% of that outdoor seating, I, there's, there's, nobody's going to put additional seats out on the sidewalk.
Okay. And then on the removal of the tree on the corner, the potocarpus, what, does that, does the fate of that tree sit here today, or does that have an additional process with Parks and Recs Commission?
The.
Ms. Regal?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Jordan, the potocarpus tree is at the discretion of the Architectural Board to review for their landscape improvements. It is outside of the required 10-foot setback, and so Parks Department has no permit authority over it.
And then normally, when, when a position is taken by an applicant's arborist, that the tree should be removed for the reasons listed in their materials. Is there, what's the alternative argument from, from a third party who's not employed by the applicant? Is it reasonable to ask for an opinion from a city arborist? Is?
I'm not sure, but I'm.
Ms. Regal?
I'm not sure if the applicant did speak with our city arborist about this tree. Maybe Brian has an answer for that.
Well.
Mr. Cornell?
Phil can speak specifically, and he did go to the Street Tree Committee, and because it's, it's completely outside of the setback, it really isn't in, in the purview of the Street Tree Committee or Park and Rec. We obviously did discuss this issue the first review with ABR, and they were okay with the removal of the tree. You know, again, the, the tree, you know, it's one of those things that for our planning purposes moving forward, since we're looking out 50 years into the future, that the tree has a, has a limited, clearly has a limited life from what Peter Wynn has indicated. And, you know, especially under the circumstances of it being on our property and us allowing the deck to remain, it becomes a very serious liability issue for Alberto. So, you know, we, believe me, we looked very clearly at this, and, and at first, we felt, gosh, let's do everything to save that tree. And after talking with Peter and his thorough review of it, it became, you know, that, that tree just has a limited life, and it really ought to go now and be replaced by something that's going to be a better tree in the long run.
He mentioned a 72-inch box, what?
Monterey Cypress is what Phil has recommended.
Can you draw me a picture of that more vertically, rather than what the box is?
Well, I mean, I asked Phil about this. He thought that it, you know, if you got a, if you got a 60-inch box, I think you thought it would be about 18 feet tall, 15 to 18 feet initially. A 72-inch box would probably be 20-plus.
And the canopy is, I'm sorry, sorry to make you do that.
Mr. Suting?
Phil Suting, Madam Chair, Commissioners. The canopy on a tree, a 72-inch box, probably be in the neighborhood of about 15 feet. And that's mainly because of transporting it. Obviously, the bigger the canopy is, you can't transport that down the road.
But it's not a twig.
Oh, no.
I guess I'm much more, I'm much more impressed with that, with that description of it.
And as the Monterey Cypress gets older, it gets more sculptured, you know, what you're used to seeing, the wind sculpts it. And this is an appropriate place for that tree, because it's so close to the coastline. And if I could back up to the potocarpus a little bit, I showed the letter from West Tree to the city arborist, Tim Downey, and I believe he probably reviewed it as part of just the package. It isn't in Parks and Recs Commission purview, it is in ABR's purview. And ABR lamented the loss of the tree, but thought in the same vein that it's good to get a nice big tree that will last that much longer.
Very good. Thank you. Thanks for that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. All right. Any other question? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Campanella, Commissioner Campanella.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If it would be appropriate to talk about one of the conditions of approval, a question for staff. On page eight of 14, it's Community Development Department condition concerning the deck as written. And maybe I am confused on it a bit, because it does talk about some action items, either if the easement is not, if the easement's obtained and the deck has an as-bill permit, one thing would happen. If that's not the case, then it talks about the building plans should include the demolition of the deck. Not portion, but demolition of the deck, and the area is to be landscaped. So is this just because something has to be said on the plans, or are we putting the applicant in a position that he can't conform to the condition?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Campanella, the condition was put there to allow flexibility for them to work out the deck-related issues. If the deck were to be demolished, it'd be the portion only on the 1255 site. It would not be what was permitted or allowed with the encroachment permits in the public right-of-way. So we're talking about this little sliver, sorry, I'm trying to get my mouse back up here, right here, up to this property line, right there. So that would be the portion that would have to be demolished. He has to do one or the other prior to building permit issuance for the larger project.
Okay, so this is not giving some type of preference to the applicant relative to his dispute or anything like that with the, with the neighbor?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any further questions, comments? Well, I do have a question in the conditions. I was looking to see if there was one relating to a construction wall to protect people on the deck while the project is being built, and I couldn't find one quickly. Is there?
There is not a specific condition about protection measures of the use of the deck or, you know, where the grading is in relation to the edge of the deck. However, during the building permit process, there will be some construction, what do you call it? Construction best management practice for protection of pedestrians and adjacent uses.
And Mr. Cornell, you said something about putting up a wall similar to the one around the St. Francis project.
Well, I don't want to put up one quite that tall, but, but that's, to me, the right solution for this problem, is that a wall, a wall goes up, you know, right away, and it stays there through the course of construction, so that there's, it obviously is a barrier not only for noise, but for dust and that sort of thing. So.
Madam Chair?
Ms. Regal?
You could add a condition to that effect to incorporate that in, and it would be under the design review criteria.
Okay. Thank you. All right, any other questions, comments? Commissioner Campanella?
Yes, a question for the applicant. Mr. Cornell, on the exhibit that I'm looking at, is there currently utility boxes, transformer? Are they size-efficient for the project? Or have you had any discussions, or your team had any discussions on that to date with the utility company?
We did have an initial discussion with Edison, and don't believe that we're going to have to, to add a transformer. Now, Edison can sometimes change their mind, but, you know, I believe if we need to, we will be able to do that off of, in, in areas off of Coast Village Circle.
Yes, that was my concern. You didn't want to lose that tree that you're putting in.
Well, and I wouldn't want to put, yeah, I wouldn't want to put a transformer on Coast Village Road.
Right, exactly. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Commissioner Schwartz?
Thank you, Madam Chair. One last question to Ms. Regal. In terms of process, you had a slide up for us about the sequencing of the reviews. And I wanted to understand between our review today and the ABR's next review, on the 22nd of this month, this will go back to the Montecito Planning Commission, is that correct? No, it will not.
No, that is incorrect.
Okay.
That's a different project.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So it's definitely not on their agenda. So they've had their one and only courtesy review?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Well, if there are no further questions or comments, motion would be in order. Mr. Jordan?
Oh, there must be, there must be comments.
Oh, okay. I asked for them before, nobody's spoken.
Everybody went off on questions again. So I will generally move with staff's recommendations, and I'll walk through each one of those approvals for you, Mr. Cato, so you know I approve of those. But generally, I really like this project. I appreciate the way the project has been lowered and works into the contours of the land. I like the way it steps down towards the corner from the higher parts to the, to the restaurant, and kind of gives a, a lessening on that block until the block starts, and the next block starts to go back up for the hotel. As always, Mr. Cornell, you've done a great job on incorporating a nice passeo into your design. It offers a couple housing units, which I think in today's world, commercial shouldn't be built without housing. The height and the bulk just seem reasonable looking around. I like the work you've done on the sidewalks and the balcony, and I'm going to be able to support all that you're asking for there. And obviously, you're, you're well under the height limit. A couple suggestions I have, and that would be going back to ABR, that you, that you work with ABR for the replacement tree to be the largest possible-sized tree that you can get in there and that will reasonably survive, that you obviously look for some additional spots for ground-level bicycle hookup spots that aren't down in the garage in the cellar, and try and keep people there. And then on the conditions, when we get to conditions, I'll have a. And then, on the conditions, when we get to conditions, I'll have a couple, well, I'll just give you my suggestions on the conditions. On the one condition we were talking about just a minute ago, Commissioner Campanella was talking about on the deck, so that's E2B. It's really not an either-or because the second-to-last line there has the word "should" in it, and that word always scares me. And so, I would suggest that you change that sentence to the building plans must include the demolition of the deck. "Should" would give somebody an "out" in the future, I think, and, and I think one, this needs to be resolved one way or the other. I'm also very sensitive to, as sensitive as I think we can be to the adjacent restaurant. And in the hours of operations, we did, I, I remember suggesting something similar when we're, I think, working on the, the bridge at State in Cabrillo. And I would like to see also, for the hours of operation, the construction hours, no Saturdays and no Friday prior to a Monday holiday. And the reason for that is, in that part of town, as down on the waterfront or in the downtown areas, those three-day weekends with a, with a Monday holiday have often turned into four-day weekends, and Fridays are a significantly busier day than a normal And then, in terms of the, the condition that we would build in, a suggestion for the sound wall, I actually like the height of the St. Francis wall, and I think there's some benefit to making it a tall wall like that. So, I'll look to some other suggestions there from my fellow commissioners, or I would suggest that staff put together a condition for approval at the next meeting that would include a similar condition as we have in the St. Francis in terms of height and scope. So, I will be able to find for the modification for the front setbacks, approval of the transfer existing development rights, approval of the development plan, the tentative subdivision map, and the coastal development plan, and I look forward to seeing this project move forward. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. Commissioner Bartlet.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I think we're fortunate to have a, a great team on this project. I've taken particular interest in this, having developed the opposite side of Coast Village Road, which was also former Turk Heslin Nursery site. That was the tree storage yard, and I'm surprised it's taken, you know, 25 years to get to finishing that effort. But I think this is going to be a great complement to the neighborhood, and I think, you know, the applicant has gone out of their way to be sensitive to, you know, all the surrounding uses. So, I think it's been well-vetted, and I think it speaks highly when you get all the other review bodies giving positive comments. So, I think that the joint review with Montecito has been helpful on this. Hopefully, we're beyond some of the past history of other projects that I think riled up the neighborhood, and I think this one has gone a long way to really appease the situation. So, I think that's a really positive sign. I know the pedestrian master plan is very confusing, and we've seen it on a lot of projects, and I think Mr. Cotto is right. This is the exact same example that we had on Hope Avenue. I'm not at all concerned with the easement for the sidewalk purposes and having the garage underneath. I think that's a very appropriate solution, and I also understand that a lot of the modification requests have come about because of the way that you measure the front setback from the new sidewalk, even though you own property out further than that. So, I think it's a technicality that actually gets us a community benefit so I can support the front setback modifications for the building and for the necessity on the handicap ramp and, and also on the deck. I think someday, when we fix all of our ordinances, I hope we can look at that, that deck issue, and maybe it can be worded different. To me, if you stack two decks over each other, that's okay, but if you put a roof on one, then it isn't, and that probably seems a little odd to me. So, anyway, it's projects like this that really remind us of what we need to deal with in the future, and hopefully, we can put that and other things on the list. I think that the project really lends itself well to this site, putting all the parking underground or in garages, and, you know, knowing the applicant and the architect team, I think it's going to probably go a long way on the sustainability front, whether they choose to go lead or not. I think all the design moves have been made, so it's probably a matter of economics, but I think the site sensitivity has really set it up to head in that direction. I agree with some of the comments of Commissioner Jordan. I think that the, the hours of construction should be discussed, and I would like to hear from the applicant team, perhaps before we craft a motion. I'm torn on this because I know it affects the adjacent business greatly, but also, when you limit the construction hours, it just pushes out the duration of construction. So, which is worse? You know, a longer timeframe on the overall project or a concentrated effort and get it finished? So, I'd like to hear a little discussion back and forth on that before we change that motion. I do agree with adding a sound wall near the deck, and I think one of the things that I noticed on the plan, the parking garage actually, even though it notches at that northwest corner, it actually protrudes underneath the existing deck. So, I think there's probably going to be some temporary measures holding up the deck as the tree comes out to do that garage. And that's actually shown on the ground floor plan, the street-level plan. But I'm okay with all the other modification requests, and I think this is a good project going forward, and I'll be willing to support it. Thank you.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to try not to duplicate comments that my colleagues have made. Let me say that I've been holding my breath regarding what the future of this property would ever be. My family moved to the area in 1967 on Middle Road, so I have seen a tremendous evolution of Coast Village Road, as I know many have, and I think it was just inevitable at some point in our lifetimes that the Turk Heslin property would turn over, and we would be facing some other type of development on Coast Village. Having said that, I want to echo the comments that Mr. Copas made, I think he had to leave, and that, that this project with the design, the proposed landscaping, the scale, just, I think, the sensitivity that the project team has brought to it really complements as opposed to, is complementary as opposed to dominating Coast Village and the neighborhood. So, with that, I want to kind of give you my kudos because I think it's come a long way, and I think we've learned from some other controversial projects that the Montecito community did not embrace, and that there didn't seem to be any strong opposition when the Montecito Planning Commission heard the project was remarkable to me, especially with the Montecito community. So, I too will be supporting this project. And in terms of concerns, first, let me address some of the environmental concerns. It's really a shame, I think, as to the increasing gridlock on Coast Village Road because the Montecito Community Plan calls for a semi-rural ethos, in a sense, and that all of our planning will take that into consideration, even though Coast Village Road is kind of an urban strip within this semi-rural community. What's happened with the Highway 101 Improvement Project is that we have altered, I think, that experience. So, I, I, I won't belabor that because I have certain perspectives on that and certain hopes for maybe how that can be alleviated. And so, yes, one more project on Coast Village Road, one new development will have some impact, but I really think that it would be unfair to hold this project and the project team and the property owner responsible for what I don't believe is going to be significant adverse traffic impacts on Coast Village. I think we have a much larger kind of monkey on our back that we need to face in terms of the impacts to Coast Village Road because of Highway 101 changes. Lastly, I would say that I'm hopeful that through an additional ABR review and in further conversations with the Hardees in terms of ensuring that this very important and very popular small business on Coast Village Road can continue. And I believe that small businesses are the lifeblood of Santa Barbara. I've said this on a number of occasions, and certainly Janine's is one of them. I hope that all of you can strike the kind of compromise that is either mutually agreeable or, to some degree, mutually dissatisfactory, but at least brings us all together and helps us move forward. So, I won't try to craft the details here or suggest how the applicant team can do that. I would just, I'm so hopeful that the two parties can find a way to make this work together because I think both of you are very important to the Montecito community and to Coast Village Road. So, with that, whichever of my colleagues will be making the motion, I will be supporting it. Thank you.
And Commissioner Thompson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, an answer to Commissioner Jordan's question about how to find the parking. It occurs to me that whenever you go to LA, to the Fabric District, to the Garment District, there's always a bunch of little guys out in the street with flags waving you into the parking. So, maybe the applicant might want to hire a little guy with a flag to wave people into the parking garage. Seriously, though, excellent project, as usual, from the design team. I would like to point out for, maybe for staff's and our benefit, although it doesn't impact specifically my approval or not on this project, the applicant has proposed what the regulations require for the residential parking, one parking garage, one covered space. But I point out, a few weeks ago, we reviewed a low-income project where the demographics would say that the people would not own more than one car, if that, and we required that project to, in perpetuity, report on vehicle ownership and find people if they own more than one vehicle. Now, what are we going to do here? Well, because residential is less than 50% of the total square footage in a mixed-use project, one parking garage is fine. Where are they going to park their other cars? In the parking garage, which we carefully craft how many parking spaces have to be there based upon residential and restaurant. So, even though they're complying with our rules, I point out to us that maybe our rules don't always make sense. Okay, that's enough on that. I think that the work hours, I agree with Commissioner Jordan, Commissioner Bartlet, that maybe there's some more work that needs to be done in determining what are the best work hours. But I would suggest that perhaps the best way to do it is for staff to get the applicant and the neighbors together and work out what is the best schedule for both parties within the limitations that we already have in our conditions of approval. In other words, if it seems better to provide a little more limitation on the hours, that could be added on top of what our conditions are without us having to go back and redo the conditions. But I think it'd be better to work it out outside of this venue rather than trying to do it here. I support all of the requested mods with one exception, and I won't disapprove the project, I won't vote against the project because of it. I, I think, given that it's a clean-site design, there's no reason that the building couldn't meet the setback requirement. I do support the idea of perhaps the Monterey balcony getting a mod because, as Commissioner Bartlet pointed out, there are some things that don't make sense about how we determine whether it does or doesn't require a mod. But the building itself, I don't see moving it back two feet in the corner. Given that it's a clean-site design, really makes that big a deal. But I won't vote against the project if the rest of my colleagues believe that that should go forward. That's all that I really want to add. Everything else has already been said. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Campanella.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My compliments as well. I think a, a very fine product and project have been created with a lot of input and discussions with groups that are concerned. I think what I see is really you've created a little community that's going to be part of the Montecito community. The flow of the project, the, the various uses, the openness in a lot of the areas, a restaurant, which would also be a gathering spot, that's very well done. I think it'd really be a, a very good adjunct to what's in Montecito and complement it very well. I agree on some of the comments that have been made on trade-offs on the construction hours, and I, I would hope that the parties would come to an agreement with staff support. Again, this would be a short-term situation, and I think the trade-offs between getting the process done and the job done as quickly as possible should also be considered in light of some, the hours of work. I'm glad, from what I saw in the letters that were given to us, it seems like the parties could be willing to work together. I think what we're talking about is maybe temporary on construction and some agreement on what the impact might be financially over some period of time. But I think the applicant has made great strides to try to assist and, and keep in place, as much as he can, the, the deck and the operations of Janine's over the long term, and hopefully, they can get together and take care of some of the financial points, which I hope are the only issues long-term. I think I can support the, the fact that, going back to the, to ABR, it appears that a couple of the elevations that were still missing for review appear to be favorable. Structures, I'm fine with the modification of the structures. TEDR, development plan is fine, tentative subdivision map and the CDP. And again, I want to congratulate the group for coming up with a very fine project. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Campanella. Sorry to go back to a question for staff from Ms. Weiss. The letter about air quality issues took issue with the city's methodology. I'd appreciate your commenting on this.
Thank you, Chair Lodge and Planning Commissioners. We, staff, we've had some discussions with Steve Johnson, and to me, it just highlights again that in the, the nature of modeling, the inputs in a model and the assumptions made on the inputs has a range of professional opinion on how that's done. So, he's taken issue with parts of the analysis. In some regard, he thought maybe it was not conservative enough, and then in other parts of the analysis, he thought it was overly conservative. And I think we're all, though, trying to get to the same place. You know, his bottom line was that, at least as I understood in my conversations with him, that for now, at the time that we, we established this buffer setback, that 250 feet seemed The consultant that we spoke to just last week said it's probably reducing already, again, based on other model information. The concern that Mr. Johnson has about prevailing winds is certainly a real factor in terms of air quality and pollutants, that his approach took more into consideration the prevailing wind than did the EIR consultant. But that's not to mean that we couldn't look at prevailing wind when we try to address the issue about how a site should be developed. So, although there's been critical review and, you know, some degree of disagreement, I don't see it as being substantial. I think Mr. Johnson's reaction to this whole thing is, it's really important to understand that. He's been in the process a long time on this project. The council adopted the, the general plan on December 1st, and, you know, we tell him that he has to come off an ABR agenda, you know, now because we have to sort this out. It's, it's been a difficult situation for different applicants to, to address and respond to. And his response in terms of really getting down and trying to understand this, I really appreciate it, but in the big scheme of things, I don't think that we're that far apart, really. I, I think that he wants to be able to go forward with his project, feeling that it is an appropriate project, and, and he is also concerned about other parts of the community where people are exposed to air quality concerns. I mean, this has just highlighted a whole new thing in his life, and I, I really appreciate. I hope he'll be a partner in being able to move this forward in terms of discussions with the ordinance committee on criteria. So, we seem to be at a little bit of a disagreement right now, but overall, maybe not so much, I'm hoping.
Thank you.
And I'm sure we'll be talking with him more.
Okay. Well, I concur with all the positive remarks that have been made. Do also appreciate the, the massing and scaling of this building, and, and it really does fit within, I think it fits within the Coast Village Road area, and so I will be supporting the... fits within the Coast Village Road area. And so I will be supporting the staff recommendation. And Mr. Jordan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You opened this door, so I'd like to ask Ms. Wiese another question. So, and this is no reflection on the applicant, it's just more, I take this opportunity to educate myself a little more. So, you know, the part in the general plan is kind of contradictory to everything else that seems to happen after that. Will the intent be, when you go forward, that if something encroaches a little bit, that one of the ways you can get by the language that will eventually be there will be mitigation, like you don't have windows that open, one. And then, two, some might have been in the DUDAC paper, the argument was made, too, that today's levels are such, but in 10 years, the mass says the levels will be a little different, so you shouldn't penalize me for placement today when 10 years from now, it might be 100 feet instead of 250 feet. What...
Well, on those points, taking the last one first, about, we have called this an interim policy, and I think over the life of its implementation, which I'm not sure how many years that will be, the distances may reduce, but I'm not sure that it's going to be reduced. Again, this assumption was, in our screening model, assumed a constant exposure for a 70-year period, and it didn't even reduce that concern as we expect the regulations to get better. You could make a different assumption, as is being put forth in the DUDAC letter. I think the city is going to take a, we're going to continue to rely on our professional expertise that we attain, recognizing that there are always different opinions. But at some point, we need to be comfortable with whatever assumptions we're going to use. And this is why I'm very concerned about each project trying to do their own analysis. It sounds very tempting to people, but again, the Air Pollution Control District advised that we stay away from that approach. And so we are going to focus on your first comment or question was, does it seem that the application of this policy is going to look at, well, moving the buildings out of the area, closing the windows? Yes. I think the answer to that is yes. And that's why the policy also said, look at this on a project-by-project basis and develop criteria so that we can deal with those issues. I'm very concerned about a possible circumstance where, you know, the criteria doesn't fit a particular project, and someone's really, you know, with limited choice on what they can do. But that's also why we've allowed the one unit on a vacant lot, you know, as a stopgap measure. And I've already spoken with one applicant who's in the process now on R3, where he's building one, and he could eventually have two or three more. But he's taking this to heart and just completing his project with one. So it's going to be interesting. We're projecting that this will be a constant concern for at least three years in the implementation of the general plan, and see where we are at that point, what each case has brought.
Thanks. I look forward to that.
You're welcome. All right. Any other questions, comments? Commissioner Bartlett.
Madam Chair, I'd like to briefly have a discussion with the applicant and/or the neighboring property owner before we craft a motion to approve the project on the construction hours and the relative impacts to both parties, to see, you know, what's going to be mutually beneficial.
Mr. Curt.
Chair, members of the Commission, Member Bartlett, I think that I agree with you that, you know, the overall time is going to be a lot more important than having a few hours where you're not operating. But I do think that what we can do, and I liked the comment of maybe working with staff and the neighbor to craft exactly what works. But, you know, we've done this before, where certain, you know, noise-creating activities can't happen before a certain hour, but you don't necessarily limit the construction workers from arriving on-site and getting staged and doing all of that kind of thing. So those are the sort of subtleties that I think we should have in these conditions. So I like, if you're willing and confident, I think since we know we've got lawyers involved anyway, and we've got to sort this out with the neighbors, I think it's a perfect opportunity to come up with a mutual agreement on how the construction is going to work and, you know, things like the fence. I would hesitate to build the St. Francis fence because the, driving the pile that's necessary for that fence alone is going to disrupt their operations. So it seems to me a more reasonable height, like eight feet as opposed to 12 feet or whatever that gargantuan thing is, would be better. So those are my thoughts.
All right. Well, if there's any comments from the parties, I would certainly love to hear those. I know from our personal experience, having done the other Turquesland site years ago, there were lines of people on the sidewalk looking through the little peepholes that we put in the construction fence, and it might be a good opportunity to drum up more coffee business or other things, too, especially with all the construction workers. So hopefully, there's something mutually beneficial that you can all work out.
Oh, thank you. I'll try to...
Mr. Hardy, before you speak, perhaps you'd be interested in the standard conditions on construction hours.
I would.
Okay. Construction, including preparation for construction work, shall be permitted Monday through Friday between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m., and Saturdays between the hours of 9:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m., excluding the following holidays, New Year's Day, Martin Luther King's Birthday, President's Day, Memorial Day, Independence Day, Labor Day, Thanksgiving Day, following Thanksgiving Day, and Christmas Day. When a holiday falls on a Saturday or Sunday, the preceding Friday or following Monday, respectively, shall be observed as a legal holiday. So that's where we're starting.
That's a policy of the city.
Those are the construction hour conditions.
That's what's in the conditions now.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair.
Sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Regal.
There is actually a second condition specific to Coast Village Road under Section B that excludes all construction activity between the Monday prior to Thanksgiving through New Year's Day. So I just wanted to include that.
Okay. Thank you. I hadn't noticed that. Thank you.
Madam Chair, just to make clear, that limitation is in the right-of-way. It's not on the private property. So let's not...
I'm sorry. That is correct. But they can't stage it there.
I think a couple of the applicants almost passed out.
Okay. Mr. Hardy.
Okay. I'm not really sure. Anything's going to be disturbing because we are serving food, and it is outside, and it's, the distance is from here to that gentleman right there. And also, the tree having to be torn out is going to cause an expense, and we don't know who's going to pay for it. I guess one of my concerns, and I hate to always make it a personal concern because I do appreciate their efforts, is that we've been there for 12 years, have run a very clean little business, and now, all of a sudden, we are having to pay a lot of money to repair the deck, demo the deck, remove the fences, put up new fences. I mean, we don't know. And that's all I'm really asking, is if we could have some time in which we could work with them to find out who is going to pay for the deck, who's going to get the architects to draw up the deck, who's going to get the permits. Those are cost-effective things. As far as the use of the property, it's like in a football game. You can play almost the entire hour, and it's a perfect game, but someone fumbles the ball, and they lose the football game. It's the same thing in our business. Just a little ripple, a little change, can make a huge difference in our business. And we struggle with that seven days a week. So I guess all we really came up here to do is to express our real, deep-felt concerns that we hope you will give us, such as the hours and a fence and other things, and let us know what's going to happen. Because at this moment, we really don't know. And we just would hope, we need your help to get us to a point where we can understand what's going to be taking place.
Unfortunately, Mr. Hardy, we can't deal with the issues between you and...
Well, the issue would be, okay, if we had a wish list, it would be from 8:00 to 5:00, five days a week, the city holidays or whatever they are. I mean, you know, if you, I'm not, what did you say?
I think those are the standard conditions.
So I don't know if we really have much voice, other than to say that we are concerned. And customers, we don't know, see, we don't know how much noise we can accept in our business and not lose from it. So we're just asking, can you mitigate the noise, the dust, the other things that will affect our business?
Well, I think we will be able to help there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, I think unless there's further discussion, I'm prepared to...
There are some other lights on.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Start down at Mr. Thompson's end.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I would, again, like to suggest to Commissioner Bartlett and my fellow commissioners that rather than trying to craft a work-hour schedule that would be mutually beneficial to all parties here, right now, that we continue with our standard construction hour conditions and allow the applicant and the neighbors and the staff to work together to come up with any additional restrictions that they might want to mutually place upon the project that makes it beneficial to all the parties, and let them do it in a give-and-take where they aren't in a formal setting and us trying to craft words for a condition of approval.
Commissioner Jordan.
Well, I have the position of agreeing with both of you, and me at the same time. So it's difficult to craft, it's difficult to be an advocate for protection when the adjacent property owner can't even define what protections he'd like. So I'm the guy who opened the box. So I would, I will let Commissioner Bartlett proceed down that path. But my input on that particularly would be that in the next couple of years, somebody's going to be really annoyed if we don't watch Saturdays, and somebody's going to be really annoyed if we don't watch Fridays before Monday holidays. And I say that from experience with a lot of the hospitality industry, that as the adjacent property owner said, one little ripple just causes a heck of a problem. And if you have an equivalent of a four-day weekend, or a UCSB graduation weekend, or a Westmont graduation weekend, and there's Friday construction going on, that person's never coming back. And it's all over the Internet. And so I would just, however this gets crafted, to allow staff to have both sides of the party sit down and work this out to mutually agreeable situations, those would be my input to staff to try and help them direct them. Thank you.
And Commissioner Schwartz.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It seems to me there's a strong interest in the community at large for the right project to move forward amicably with all of the, in particular, in this case, the commercial enterprises on Coast Village Road. And unless I'm overlooking something, I don't think we had a representative from the Tobes Group here today. Is that right? So if there are financial burdens, I would just leave you with this, if there are financial burdens which are not the purview of our commission, that also need to be addressed and resolved for the viability of Janine's to continue to be in that location, et cetera, I would just suggest that, you know, the Tobes Group be brought in, since they're the owners of the property. And I would think, with you being there 12 years, that they have a vested interest in seeing the continuation of Janine's as a tenant on their property. So, and then to Commissioner Thompson's comments, I, too, don't want to craft the details of your negotiated, you know, construction hours. However, I also agree with Commissioner Jordan, and this came up at our recent Chapala Bridge rebuild project. I think we need to increasingly be sensitive to what can appear to be a short-term construction project, and due to no fault of the applicant at times, you know, this timeline gets expanded out to a longer timeline, and the next thing you know, a neighborhood, residential and commercial, are significantly impacted over an undue period of time. And so I'm going to be inclined to kind of tamp down pretty hard on the impacts to not just Janine's, but everybody else on Coast Village Road. And I don't know what the right next step is in terms of pulling in the hours of construction and the days of construction, but I would also be in support of that. Thank you.
Well, perhaps adding a condition which directs staff to meet with the applicant and the next-door neighbors to work out some modifications to the hours, which are helpful to Janine's, and in regards to a fence to provide or wall to provide protection from noise and sound. I seem to...
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Regarding the hours of operation or the hours of construction, I would really recommend that the Commission try their best to set a maximum parameter and leave it to the parties to work within that envelope on whatever modifications they wish to make. Whether, I mean, the construction hours are a maximum. The applicant, if the applicant and their neighbor can come to a mutual agreement on some modification within that maximum, great. But putting it in, involving the city is just adding a third-party complication to a mutual, if they arrive at a mutually agreeable solution, then presumably they police it themselves, and they've arrived at that mutually agreeable solution. What I was hearing, the difference that I was hearing between the neighbor and our conditions was the starting hour was between a 7:00 and an 8:00. And then the Commission was concerned about whether or not that's going to push out the length of the whole project. One suggestion that I would make would be to provide an envelope or to provide the neighbors a bit of a more, an envelope that could address some of their concerns would be, the hours from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., that's five hours, or I'm sorry, that's 10 hours. So one potential way would be that the construction hours shall be no more than 10 consecutive hours within the period of time from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. It gives them that flexibility to slide one way or the other. If the two parties find that to be a useful slide, then that's up to you. But that was the one, that was the one place I saw an easy flexibility, you know, an easy way to add flexibility to these conditions, which we've had lots and lots of projects use these conditions. Have there been isolated situations? Yes. But in general, these conditions have become fairly expected by the community.
Thank you, Mr. Vincent. Well, since the Janine's closes at 4:00, is that correct? Certainly would be advantageous to move it later in the day, would it not? Mr. Bartlett.
Let me give it a shot, then. See where we end up. So I would like to craft a motion for approval of the project based upon our staff report of February 2nd, making the findings for the front setback modification, the transfer of existing development rights, the development plan approval, the tentative map, the new condominium development, and the coastal development permit per the attached conditions of approval, with amendments proposed for Condition F1, which is in the construction implementation. And I would like to bolster the neighbor notification on this so that the contractor can provide a schedule that elaborates especially on the noise-making efforts of the construction so that the neighbors are aware of that. Also, I would like to revise Condition F5 to provide more flexibility for the applicant and the adjacent property occupants to work together on the construction hours, to expand the construction hour window from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. with a maximum of 10 consecutive hours during any day, to be mutually agreeable between the parties. I would also like to add a condition that the applicant install a sound wall adjacent to the Westerly property to protect that business and its operation during the construction hours. hours. And also, I would like to increase the requirement for the bicycle parking, to look for opportunities to add redundant bike parking at street level but not covered, since the required parking is already located in the garage. And to work with the ABR to achieve the largest reasonable replacement tree size to replace the potocarpus that is being removed. And I think, I think that's it on the revised conditions.
I'll second the motion.
Second?
Mr. Jordan, Commissioner Jordan.
Just one more that I mentioned, too, if that's acceptable to both the motion maker and the second, that was under the Community Development Department, number 2B, was to change the removal requirement of the deck. If they got that far from the building plans should include the demolition of the deck to the building plans must include the demolition of the deck. So that's on page 8.
Page 8.
Number 2B. It's the last, second-to-last sentence, the last word in that sentence is "should." And I suggested that we replace that with "must."
Yeah, I can go along with that wording change.
Madam Chair, may I suggest one additional change to that, is that, so that the last phrase after the comma would read, "The building plans must include the demolition of the deck on 1255 Coast Village Road and the areas to be landscaped," to differentiate the deck that's on 1253 in case, so, I mean, to whatever degree that the deck on 1253 could remain, it would not be a mandatory part of this application, since that portion of the deck would not require the easement that would not be obtained in that sentence.
Okay. That would be agreeable.
I'll second that with the amendment.
Okay.
Madam Chair, can I ask a question of the motion maker? A couple of things I heard were hours not allowing construction on Saturdays was a comment I heard through the discussion. And the other was, how high would the sound wall be in your, in your motion?
Well, I didn't remove the Saturday hours on that. I just expanded the window for the Monday-through-Friday hours with flexibility. And I don't know that, I want to elaborate on the sound wall height because of, I think, the height differentials between the property and properties. And I think that's going to be for the applicant and the neighbors to work out because of the elevated deck condition, I think, be premature on our part to dictate a mandatory height.
Okay. Any other?
Right of motion stand.
Mr. Jordan.
Yes.
Yes? Okay. So your light is on? Okay. All right. If there are no further questions, comments on the motion, to concur with the staff recommendation was the changes on the additions to the conditions, all of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So ordered? You have a project, it is appealable within the next 10 business days to the City Council. Calendar days, I'm sorry. All right. Does the applicant want any of these copies of the plans back? Mr. Campanella, Commissioner Campanella, the applicant, Mr. Kertall indicated that they would, he would like to have the plans.
I have the plans.
Oh, okay. All right. Good. All right. That brings us to the administrative agenda, committee and liaison reports. This first one's a staff hearing officer liaison report. I don't think there's been a meeting since the last report. And on item two, are there any other committee or and/or liaison reports? Not seeing any lights go on. I assume that there are not. That concludes the council meeting, the planning commission meeting, sorry about that. And the planning commission meeting is adjourned.